Okay, so we are getting powered up and ready to go. And our recording, thank you. Okay, well, good afternoon. It is Monday, March 25th, 2024. Welcome to the Affordable Housing Review Board meeting. I'm Sarah Gooding. I'm the Real Property Section Manager for Housing and Community Services in the city of Wichita. And Valerie Black has graciously agreed to walk us through our agenda today in the room of our chair. So our first item is our call to order.
I call this meeting to order.
Thank you. And then, Sarah, we've got a whole call. And I'm going to just go with the ones that I know I have seen so far. And then if there's anybody else, then I'll ask them to state their name as well. So I'm seeing John Todd, Valerie Black.
Here.
And Elizabeth Sowradsnow. And Stacy Meyer.
Here.
Wonderful. Is there anyone else, any other board members joining us? Well, I would like to take a moment and do a quick introduction. We have a woman here who is a guest with us today, and next month she will be joining us as a board member. Rebecca, and remind me one more time with your last names.
Starkey Kiesling.
Okay, so Rebecca Starkey Kiesling is an appointment by Mayor Lily Wu. And so she will officially be joining our board in April and is here to learn and take in this afternoon. So thank you so much for being here and your willingness to serve. Okay, so we had a meeting in December and then a follow-up meeting January 2nd. And then we had a joint board workshop on January 11th. And so today, we're actually looking at all three sets of meeting minutes and asking for board review and approval of those meeting minutes.
I have motion to approve.
I think that was Stacy had done a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passed four to zero. Thank you. And so really, the part of everything that I wanted to bring to the board today, we don't have any particular proposals or action items today, but staff have been working to try to prepare for the launch of the Affordable Housing Fund Request for Proposal. We're finding that that is not a small task. It has been, become a very complex project, a lot of opportunities, a lot of making sure that we're trying to do things in ways that are consistent with the various policies that guide it. And so before we actually go live with that proposal, we wanted to bring it to the board and share a little bit about where we've been, where we are, and what's ahead, and take some board feedback within that, too. And so I wanted to basically kind of start with a little bit of a recap of where we've been. As you remember, this board began meeting in June of 2023, and the board approved the Affordable Housing Fund Program Plan in the fall of 2023. And so in the past months, staff have been working to develop this request for proposal. And you'll hear me say RFP, that's short for the same thing. You'll hear me say AHF for Affordable Housing Fund, so want to clarify the abbreviations. The RFP will be a multifaceted RFP that allows proposers to propose purchase of select public housing properties. They will also be able to request Affordable Housing Fund resources for projects. And then they will propose how they plan to secure assisted units for long-term affordability, whether that is for owner-occupied or for rental housing. And I don't know for sure if our director, Sally Sting, will be joining us, but she has additional knowledge on some of this. So if we get into technical questions, then I may need to reach out to her to try to get some deeper answers, because we are learning as we go, for sure.
I'm on remote, Sarah.
Wonderful. Thank you, Sally. She's a lifesaver. So anyway, going back to last, last few years, 72.4 million was received by the city in American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, state and local fiscal recovery funds. So SLF, we like our acronyms in housing. It was allocated to the city of Wichita to offset COVID impacts. One of the things that came out of community engagement around that funding was that housing was a key priority for ARPA. And so within that, the council allocated $5 million to create the Affordable Housing Fund. We went through a season of looking at what that really looked like through Treasury guidance. And in the end, this is not really ARPA funding anymore. It is general funds. And funds were reallocated within the budget to balance that out. But we are still operating, for the most part, with ARPA parameters and timelines. So still honoring that engagement that was done. The council has placed a high priority on affordable homeownership. And so this program really targets efforts to try to stabilize low and moderate income households as affordable homeowners. And so the goal of the Affordable Housing Fund, at its core, is to improve the quality of existing housing stock, while we also expand quality affordable housing options and look at promoting neighborhood stability in Wichita's core, some of the areas that are due for reinvestment and continued investment. And so this plan was designed to create accountability for affordable outcomes. So this is not just cash infusion and then we walk away. This comes with long-term looking at the outcomes and ensuring that those parameters are met. So when we talk about Wichita's core area, this is the established central area. It is kind of roughly Rock Road to Interstate 235. I believe about 29th Street on the north, 31st Street on the south. And we really want to focus in, even within that area, on qualified census tracts and established, or, and other properties in the established central area as places that we know will need housing-related investment. And so our focus area, we also know, serves a lot of Wichita's minority communities. And in the COVID pandemic time, those communities were disproportionately, disproportionately impacted by housing insecurity and a lot of the impacts that we saw from the ups and downs of that season. And so the program incorporates equity into all its policies, into how we administrate the program, our review process and our oversight. And part of that is the role of this board, which is really to provide the professional expertise and community perspective in evaluating these proposals. So I love that we're really getting to the heart of what this board is designed to do. One of the things we want to make sure of in the program is that minority developers and contractors can reasonably participate and that decision-making around the projects considers the impact to minority communities. And so drilling down a little bit more, many of our board members are aware and have discussed in the past that the Public Housing Authority, which is one and the same within our department, is working to sell 352 single-family homes. Many of these homes are being sold on the open market. We would love to see affordable home ownership out of those, but we are not placing restrictions on many. However, we've got some areas that where the homes owned by the housing authority are clustered. And we know that that is a sensitive thing for what happens to those neighborhoods. And so we want to look additionally into how we can impact those for a brighter future. And so our groups 2AI and 2AII, and those are our names for head purposes, include 66 units in two clustered areas in two parts of the city. Both areas are within the established central area, and those units in those areas will be sold via the Request for Proposal process. Ultimately, the sale of the units will be subject to the approval of the Wichita Housing Authority Board, which is the council plus one representative. So I want to be really clear as we walk through this, who is responsible for what, when it comes to roles? Because sometimes it will look like the council potentially making two separate approvals for the same thing, but in two different capacities. So developers will be able to access Affordable Housing Funds for rehabilitation or development in these areas. And for the greater picture, for really what we're trying to do with this, is that it's a strategic opportunity to test what targeted investment looks like in two very different neighborhoods, in two very different parts of the city, with $5 million in pilot funds at such a large number and at such a small number for what we're trying to do. So in no way is this going to capture everything that we know is needed for the community's housing. But if we craft this correctly and are able to follow up and watch the outcomes, we hope that we can see that this targeted investment makes a difference and perhaps gives insights for future models and initiatives. And so moving along to maps, this is Group 2AI. It includes 43 units in northeast Wichita. The units are between Minnesota Avenue and Hyatt, with a couple on Madison, between 25th and 26th Streets. Those numbers on each one are bedroom sizes. And so you can see, we are looking at three, four, and five bedroom units. Those are so important for the city's housing stock right now. Within this group, the average appraisal value is about $44,465. Each unit is appraised separately as a fair market appraisal value, and each unit must sell for at least that fair market appraisal value. But then developers will have the opportunity to propose for funding to fix those units up and really bring them up to standards. Similarly, our Group 2AII is in southwest Wichita, District 4. It includes 23 units. If you look at these three that are kind of up here, a little bit separate, and then we have quite a few four, five, and six bedroom units in this L shape down here of all the housefuls in St. Clair. And so generally, these are near Meridian and Pawnee. They are a higher average appraisal value of just over $80,000 per unit. Again, there is variation from unit to unit within that. And so within the Affordable Housing Fund, the idea of how this fund was crafted is not to be accessible to every single person, but this is really about working with developers who are familiar with this space to reinvest in affordable outcomes. And it is a complex series of programs. I lovingly refer to it as our kitchen sink approach. We have components of many programs this board has seen in the past six months, as well as homeownership, down payment assistance, we have project-based vouchers. So we have a little bit of a lot of things, but it does require a certain level of proficiency in navigating federal, state, and local government funding assistance. And so it is accessible for both non- and for-profit developers. Within that, we need developers to have a track record of completing renovation or rehabilitation within a reasonable timeline. We need to know that they have demonstrated capacity to complete projects, in part because we are still on ARPA timelines. We must obligate funds this year in 2024, and we must expend funds by 2026. So we're looking at making sure that people can see through what they commit to within this process. And so any developers that currently work with us must be in good standing with all funding commitments. I'm also hopeful that we will see new developers who maybe have experience within this realm or can partner with that experience, who might choose to enter the affordable housing space through this process. And so our current Request for Proposal is really looking at single-family renovation. Developers can propose for up to $40,000 in Affordable Housing Funds per unit. We're going to, as part of our process, try to make sure they have adequate access to the units so that they can really spec it out and develop a good scope of work, because we want to see that those funds are really aligned with what's needed in each unit. For this purpose, these funds may not be combined with other programs that do the same thing. We have stacked many programs within it, but we're not going to duplicate and double invest from multiple programs. And we are prioritizing projects that look at using existing public housing units within this process. Okay, so affordable outcomes. When we talk about housing affordability, we're talking about households that, for the household size, bring in 80% or less of the area median income. And that is calculated by HUD each year. Those numbers are available within various parts of our website, because they're really our key reference guides for each program. And so within homeownership, yeah, I don't have those numbers in my head right at the moment, so I'm not going to quote them, but I do have resources that I can provide that give guidance on what those numbers look like. So with homeownership, we offer down payment assistance in the form of a 0% interest. It's a partially forgivable loan. So with down payment assistance, we always pair that with projects, really as our compliance mechanism, that secures that assistance for the term of the funding compliance. And so we put the lien on the property, and after the assisted household has resided in the home for 10 years, then the portion of the funds can be forgiven. So right now, we're seeing a lot of projects in other housing build spaces that's coming in $20,000 to $30,000 or so. It's down payment assistance. And so it really makes a key difference for home buyers to have that 20% down or so to help really get them to where they're building equity in the house quickly. And so down payment assistance will be required for anyone doing homeownership. And then we're also working with project-based voucher options, or developers can propose low-income housing tax credits if they're proposing rental options. We are looking for a healthy neighborhood mix of approximately 75% homeownership, and we are prepared to provide the down payment assistance and securities accordingly. So again, really looking at prioritizing Wichita Housing Authority homes. And that allows us to utilize existing assets to improve sustainable homeownership and quality rentals. And so we do this by filing deed restrictions against properties, and then those help to ensure the compliance period. They also help us to ensure that the projects will be completed and stay affordable long-term. So for example, if a household assisted by down payment assistance weren't moved within that 10-year compliance period, that assistance would need to be repaid. But the developer subsidies and things would not necessarily be, need to be repaid. However, if the household lives there throughout the 10 years, then part of the assistance is forgiven in celebration of that success. Okay, so moving forward to what staff has been busy on for the past few months. We've been developing a Request for Proposal. If you haven't worked through a Request for Proposal within government, it really is a tool that is kind of a step beyond a bid's process. It allows us to really consider what is most advantageous in the process. And so it was the right tool for this particular project. So basically, what will be in the proposal will look a lot like what the board has already seen in the form of our housing development loan program applications. We're leaning heavily on those templates as we look at the types of questions that we have for developers, as we look at qualified buyers, best practices, and things like that. And so the proposal process will include the chance to request subsidies or project-based vouchers, and then to bid on particular properties. And so as we work through, staff will review the submissions received, will provide analysis of those proposals. Because we're really looking heavily at public housing units, we have done a lot of environmental review work already, but any additional work that is necessary in that realm. And then we will bring those to the board, once we feel like we have complete, well-analyzed proposals. The board will have the chance to review, score, and recommend those to the council. And then ultimately, approval will come, I believe, from the Wichita City Council for the funds. And the sale of the houses will have to come from the Wichita Housing Authority Board. Have I confused you yet? And I will be honest, putting this together is really good for us, because it is, there is a lot that goes into this. And so to really remind ourselves and staff, we can get deep in one component or another, but here's the comprehensive process. As we're looking at scoring mechanisms, we are proposing scoring that considers about 75% weighting on the overall application from each developer. And so developers have basically a two-part application. The first part is really their comprehensive vision for what are they trying to do in the community and in the neighborhood? What are the outcomes they're trying to secure or to facilitate? We want to know about the credentials and expertise of that team, the financial condition, performance records, source of the financing. We want to see their overarching affirmative marketing plan. And then we look at emerging business enterprise and disadvantaged business enterprise for the city. And I believe we look at women and minority businesses on behalf of HUD. So we have many different factors that look at minority participation. And then we get to per unit, and staff is recommending weighting that at about a 25% score. And so we would look at each unit's development plan. Really, what is the developer proposing with that particular unit? Is this proposed scope of work and request for funding reasonable, given staff's familiarity with that unit? Looking at development plans and timelines. And do we believe, based on what we're seeing, that the developers have the capacity to do what they're proposing in the timelines that we are limited to? And then looking at other sources of financing and the proposed Affordable Housing Fund amount requested for each unit. And so we are still finessing what this all looks like to bring it together, but hope that by the time that we bring it back to the board, both within the process and especially if the board is conducting review, that we have a very clear process. And so I'm ultimately speaking to you all while we're in the middle or toward the later end of the development process of this. We are looking at bonus scores for projects that propose six or more units. Obviously, the, we hope that we can see a lot of developer interest in this. But if we are working with one developer for 10 or 15 units, there is some scale of economy efficiency gained. And so it would be far easier to work with maybe eight or 10 developers as opposed to 66. And so anything that has a higher number of units proposed will have a bonus. Other criteria, and these are really kind of make or break, proposals for public housing units must be at or above the appraised value. That is what HUD has authorized for disposition, and so we cannot sell for less than that appraised value. And then applicants must demonstrate within either the applicant firm or the partnership that there's past experience with government-sponsored funding of this sort, just because of the complexity of the various projects that we're putting together within this. So anticipated timeline, we don't have a go-live date to announce quite yet. We're hoping that we're close, but we don't want to put that date out before we're definite on it. I do hope to schedule a pre-proposal conference approximately one week before we go live. And that way, we can talk to developers about what's coming, kind of give them some lead time, probably very similar to what we've presented today. We'll have a go-live on Monday of the first week. Basically, give a week for people to look through the Request for Proposal document. We're building a library of supplemental materials and resources to go with it. And so then our weeks two and three of this process, we'll have staff out in the cluster areas, opening the units up for walkthroughs. My plan is that we would have a significant number of staff, probably one day in one cluster and the next day in the other cluster, but there to answer basic questions, just really be great resources. And over the course of the coming days and weeks, we'll continue to have those staffed at designated times, probably not with the whole team. But that way, developers can bring contact workers through, really look at plumbing and electrical and finished carpentry and anything that they think is going to be needed so they can build their specs. So we also will require questions to be submitted to staff by the, the end of that third week. Hopefully, they'll be developing questions as they're working through the document and then working their way through the various housing units. Staff will have a week to turn around an addendum with answers to that question. And then the following week, I expect us to conduct some submission workshops. We are using a new platform to us. Others in our department have used it. It's called Zoom Grants, and it's supposed to basically be a turnkey platform that we can go from having the application all the way through our draws process and our financial management. And so others in our department have had success with it. And this is the platform that we think will help really to crowd the scope of work that we're looking at with this process. And so proposals will be due that Friday of the fifth week. So it will be approximately just over a month that we'll have this process going. And at that point, staff will conduct review, look for completeness, accuracy, preliminary analysis. We will convene this board to review and to score those applications. And then from this board's scoring and recommendations, we will roll them forward to council. Council will probably look like preliminary commitment of funds, conditional commitment, sorry, which is what we did also with our recent Habitat for Humanity, Midnight Housing, and Make-A-Development applications. And so we hold that conditional commitment until a final contract is developed. And then we need the final contract through council, and at that point, the project can begin. So quite a process, but that's, that's what we have ahead of us. Times a bunch, a bunch of opportunities. Oh, I guess I jumped ahead without my slide. And so with that, I would be glad to try to answer any questions, take any feedback, recommendations from what you all are hearing.
Give you the mission of this board. Please, Mike, it's already set.
It's really about providing the professional expertise and community perspective and evaluating the proposals. I'm looking here at my agenda packet, but especially looking at principles of equity. I think that's the place where the COVID pandemic drove home so much about the need for community voices and community representation in making sure that as staff, we're not becoming blind to the appropriate delivery of funds. And so I think that's...
I have a question about the homeownership assistance. That's for the actual people who want to buy the homes, right? Or for the developer?
Yeah, so basically, that is modeled very closely after the single-family development that we've done recently. So the developer, the reason we do it that way is that, for example, we recently subsidized one organization at about $37,000 per unit and one at about $90,000 per unit. Those are just different models. But those subsidies have to be secured, and the compliance period for those is based on the amount expended. But then when we come alongside with down payment assistance, it actually shifts the burden from those subsidies and those subsidy amounts to the down payment assistance. And so the down payment assistance does not benefit the developer, other than assisting them in selling the unit. That assistance is a direct assistance to the home buyer. And so it shifts, it becomes really a lower threshold. That's actually one of the things that we got into with the original Treasury guidance, is that the compliance period for homeownership under the ARPA funds was 20 years. And so we were looking at the numbers, realized we would have home buyers upside down for 15-plus years under the original guidance. And so that's part of where some of the shifts happened, because ultimately, we want the home buyers to be able to benefit from that equity that they can build.
Is that process tedious?
It is. Everything that has to do with federal funding is. With the down payment assistance, a lot of it is, we basically underwrite, similar to what a bank would, except that we know the mission and the focus of our program. And so we are looking to make sure that home buyers have the resource to stay in the home once they've purchased. We're looking to make sure that, like, debt-to-debt-income ratios aren't going to have them one step away from losing the home. We look at making sure that the final payment is affordable. So I would say yes, but not overly so. Not compared to some of the other programs and things that we do.
Is there anything in place, or what happens, let's say, for instance, there's the owner and they die before the 10 years is up? They have families living in that home.
You know, I can answer for one of my programs, but I want to make sure, so if Sally is listening in, please correct me if I stray.
And I'm looking at this for equity.
Absolutely.
See if it's fair.
So with my home repair program, it's mortgage-based as well. And so if somebody were to pass away or something before the compliance period was up... was above, uh, qualifying first-line error, can inherit the loan under its current terms as long as they are also low to moderate income. And so I, I haven't tested that for sure against our home AD, um, down payment assistance program. And so I'm going to let Sally correct me if I'm wrong there.
You are correct. We can have that, we will have that provision to allow that first-line error that is income eligible.
Now, if the first-line error were not income eligible, then basically assistance would have to be repaid upon sale or transfer. Or if that first-line error chose not to continue to live in the unit but to sell it, then it would have to be repaid. But as long as basically that qualifying household line remains in that unit, that's what we're trying to secure for them.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for staff. This is Stacy. I'm curious to know, based on that allocated funds of the seventy-two point four, has staff done any kind of forecasting or analysis on knowing that there's a deadline on allocating this money and putting it to use? What conversations were had around, we think we can get there, um, by X time? Based on really your experience in this area?
That's a great question. Um, I think Sally might be best positioned to answer that one.
We, we have some, um, other maneuvers that we can make to make sure that we have this funding allocated in its timeframe and still have it available for its intended use. Yeah, I'm, I'm not really, I'm not concerned, um, with the obligation and expenditure deadline. The other thing I didn't quite hear, um, in the presentation so much that I thought I might hear in the questions is around, uh, developer profit. Cause that's one of the things we keep hearing from the outside is this is just something to get developers rich. Um, know that under this model, the developer can only walk away with their developer fee. Um, they can, and this is, uh, done by design. Um, if they walk away with proceeds from the sale, then all of the development subsidy has to be repaid. And so they are walking away only with their develop, their developer fee, which is twelve percent of the construction costs. Um, so there is protections in there so that this is not designed just to make developers rich. Um, and the reason we do use developers, uh, rather than end users, end users don't have the experience or capacity to meet the federal requirements, um, with a federal allocation of funds. And even some developers don't have that e- experience, um, related, you know, depending on the number of units we get into, whether section three, Davis Bacon, uh, there are very complex, uh, federal requirements that the standard homeowner or home buyer, potential buyer, isn't going to have that capacity. So, hope that helps clear that up.
And so with that, we definitely encourage developers who are considering, um, taking part in this, if they don't have that experience or their capacity to be creative in finding partnerships with those who do. Um, it would be amazing to see developers into this, the affordable housing space, but it's also going to be a very complex journey. And so that will be a requirement. So I think I saw John raise his hand.
I want to understand how this works on the first sixty-six units you said. I'm a bid, average, uh, the average appraisal is forty-four thousand, four sixty-five. Let's just, this example, let's just use that one house. So they bid forty-four thousand, four sixty-five. How does the forty thousand fit in? And how does the developer fee, is it added on as twelve percent in addition? And if, and if, and if they use that money for, uh, and they keep heaps of properties and then work with the subsidized housing, is the forty thousand get paid back? And how does all of that work?
So this would be basically the, sorry, I'm far better when I can go to the chart and graph and I don't have one of those right in front of me. Um, basically they would need to propose no less than the fair market appraised value as a purchase price for the unit. Um, then they can propose up to forty thousand additional, um, for the renovations. That would include, um, the developer fee. They may also need to bring other financing and other opportunities to the table for that. Um, I'll confess, this is an area that I'm not quite as strong, don't have quite as much experience. So I would invite additional, additional feedback on that too.
I wasn't trying to trap you. Forty-four, let's say, let's say some bids on one, forty-four thousand, four sixty-five, they get the bid. Now they can spend an extra forty thousand. And, uh, if, if they decide to keep that, the, the, and do they have to pay, how does the developer fee, do they get, they get to keep that twelve percent?
I believe it would be structured, even like our multifamily rental have been where, um, that's really secured by the, either project-based vouchers or low-income housing tax credit, um, where.
We're going to have to show how that forty thousand spent.
Definitely.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, um, that would have to be repaid if the compliance periods are not met. And so those are really the securities that go into ensure compliance.
If an investor owns one for fifteen or twenty years, is it forgiven?
At the, yes, at the term of the, the project-based voucher contract, which is a minimum of fifteen years. Can be twenty. It can be twenty. Some people want twenty. Um, but yeah, minimum fifteen years. The development subsidy, yes, is forgiven at that point, just like the development subsidy is forgiven on the, the home buyer side when they meet their, their requirements.
I guess the question I have is it to the developers' benefit to actually keep the units for his own per portfolio? Or is it selling it to a home buyer?
It depends on the developer's model. I mean, a lot of developers don't keep, don't keep a, a portfolio of rental housing. Some do. So if, you know, if a developer is wanting to do rental, they may want to. In the long run, they have to do their operational pro forma to see whether or not this makes sense for them. If it's something, you know, that they want to enter into if they haven't before. You understand what I'm saying? Yeah, a lot of our, a lot of our affordable housing developers already do the home buyer side of the world and only dat, have done a few units in rental. Um, but, you know, we're really hoping to attract some others into this, into this arena with this RFP.
And when we speak of developers, we're expecting, um, hoping for interest from a lot of the groups that we have worked with traditionally, such as Habitat for Humanity, Midnight Housing, Jacob's Ladder, Builds Community, um, Power CDC and Residential Housing. I believe the ones that we have a recent history of working with. Um, so those would certainly be potential developers, but we are certainly not limited to that as well.
As I understand, those, those are.
Yes.
Have you had experience with the for-profit private sector in these type of projects?
Yes.
Particularly in the rental side. Particularly in the rental side. We see more for-profit developers that are actually trying to build out their rental portfolio. It's more common on the rental side with the for-profit developers than it is on the, on the, um, homeowner side because they are limited on what you're earning on those, uh, units that you're putting up for sale to low-income buyers.
Can you explain the, I think three hundred fifty-two is what you started with. And as I understand, our last meeting, you said nine of them were full. Can you give us some idea how many, who bought what?
Um, yeah, so far I don't have the data right in front of me. So far on the ones that we have had on the market, we are certainly seeing more interest from investors. Um, we've seen a few home buyers, but I would say majority have definitely been investors looking at portfolio options or homes that they can come in and invest in and flip. Um, we are still, I believe, actively working with a couple of public housing tenants who are looking to purchase the units they currently live in. We're excited for that, um, hoping to be able to celebrate that. It's, it's definitely a journey though. And as we look at our next batch of, so we have the thirty-seven that we have been marketing. We have the sixty-six that we've discussed today, and we have fifty-one more that are scattered sites getting ready to enter the market. And continuing to see interest from current tenants hoping to purchase their current homes. Um, I would say just, you know, my analysis of it is that so far we are seeing the interest rates certainly curtail interest from what we hoped would be a lot of first-time home buyers. Uh, then the higher interest rates are making it difficult to look at a home that is in need. Most of them need some maintenance and some freshening up. One of the things that we're going to be really trying to promote as we hit more of the spring home buyer season is that we have a program called Home Repair that can assist low and moderate income homeowners with critical repairs. Typically that is to stabilize current home, but homeowners in their home. But we are going to open it up to pair with public housing purchases. So it becomes a functional in-house rehab program for the homes. Uh, so somebody could purchase the home, access up to twenty-five thousand dollars more. Um, five thousand of it would be forgiven after five years and then the remainder would stay as a deferred loan. But we're hoping that layering the programs that way can assist with, um, getting people over the, not only do they need to qualify for the purchase, but then they need to rehab as well. And so we don't really have any mortgage conditions on, like, standard banking mortgage conditions on the home repair loan. We do want to make sure property taxes are paid in full. And so with a unit that has just been purchased, that shouldn't be an issue. We want to make sure they have insurance. But the barriers are very low to accessing that program for upkeep and rehab of those homes. So we keep on looking at just how can we deliver more and especially looking at home buyers and homeownership.
Well, on, on the ones that you have where you have, uh, I congratulate you on bringing, bringing people out houses and into homeownership because I think that's, that's a very desirable goal. Uh, it's, it's individual wealth creation, uh, generational wealth, neighborhood uplift. Uh, it's been my experience that when you, when you get into the neighborhoods where more homeownerships and there's rentals, you see stronger communities. Stronger communities also mean that, that, that neighbors are involved and, and issues like crime and some of the other things. So we see uplift basically. It works, it works basically. So the question that, how, how do the homeowner are buying one of these? Do they, does this work a little bit like section two or three K? Do they, do they have to bring a contractor in to do the rehabilitation?
Um, yeah, home repair, anything we pay up.
Talking about the two, three hundred fifty-two houses.
Um, the, just overall, the, the ones that we are selling just on the open market, no. Um, those, we are not securing in any particular way unless, unless somebody ends up coming back and layering them with home repair or another program. Um, the ones, the sixty-six that we're looking at today, those are part of the three hundred and fifty-two. And because of the clustered nature, I'm going to flip back there. Because they're so clustered and because of the neighborhood impacts, we do want to make sure that those are, but some of the ones that are more scattered sites, no, it's really just on the market.
Well, this, this, you're looking at, at this cluster that you have up there. I am very familiar with the, the unity. And it would certainly be to the benefit of, of this neighborhood cluster for most of it to be owner occupied.
And our goal is seventy-five percent. I think with project-based vouchers, we have approval for sixteen vouchers to accompany this program. And so we know that, you know, the distribution of those sixteen between these two cluster areas really reinforces that. Now, if somebody came in with a low-income housing tax credit proposal, that could change those numbers little. But our goal is to really see these become owner-occupied places where owners can come in. They can invest in building neighborhood, building community, securing, um, the good things that we know can be part of homeownership.
John, this is Logan Bradshaw, Assistant Director. I'm online as well. I think you were kind of also trying to get at the end user. So who's going to, or the beneficiaries, I guess is what I should say from these. So prospective home buyers will work directly with development partners. Whoever is charged with, you know, rehabbing these units in this area out of the Affordable Housing Fund, RFP process. So the prospective buyers will work directly with those developers in order to determine who's going to get access to purchase those. But the same way that we do for our HDLP, you know, will our housing development loan program will make sure that the information is on our website, that there are developers who are working to rehabilitate these. Um, and that home AD funds will be made available to the end users. But prospective buyers wouldn't work directly with the city. They'd work with, um, the developers.
And so basically that process looks like, um, prospective buyers, we do encourage them, you know, begin by reaching out to a lender, um, talk with that lender about, you know, what it's going to take for you to take a home buying journey. Um, they apply to that development partner. And then, um, basically we receive their, um.
Well, if seventy-five percent of these are going to be homeowners, uh, I guess basically during this whole process, let's say near completion of, of the rehabilitation, they just put them on the market with real estate broker.
Um, that would be up to each developer in terms of who they use.
The comeback city doesn't.
No.
Now, we will be processing any of these that turn for affordable homeownership o- opportunities. Um, we would be processing the home AD application for the down payment assistance to ensure that it meets our underwriting guidelines. Um, and that is to ensure, you know, that there's an affordable outcome, an affordable homeownership outcome out of the program. That's what the benefit that we get with layering that with home AD.
Well, back to one of the sixty-six, you got forty-four thousand, four sixty-five. And plus there can be another forty thousand, so that puts it eighty-four thousand. And twelve percent of that is, is the developer's, uh, fee.
I believe twelve percent of construction costs. So for this purpose, because these are existing units, we're not necessarily including those in the construction cost for the developer fee. So.
I've been in a few of them, some of, some of them need some freshening up.
Brad, do you want to come off? We have a question to hand up online.
Questions.
I'm asking the gentleman to yield some time. Um, I was wondering on, on project, project-based vouchers, I'm assuming the housing authority would do an annual inspection on those. On homeownership, is there a mechanism in place to, um, check in and just make sure that the homes are kept in good working order from the outside especially too?
That would be part of a monitoring and compliance process. Um, I, I am fairly new to that part of the program, but looking at, yes, how do we do that and making sure that it is done?
Some people can buy a home, but then maintaining it's the tough part.
Hmm, and so as I've looked at options for that process, what I would envision is definitely having ongoing outreach throughout that ten-year compliance period. Part of that outreach actually being resourcing, um, coming to people and helping them to understand, hey, at five years, you are halfway to forgiveness. Um, and seven years, helping people to understand, um, typically with our home repair program, it wouldn't actually kick in with a new affordable unit built until seven years because of warranties. And so with home repair on a complete rehab like these, it would probably be a similar timeline. But resourcing people, recognizing for some people that building of equity and wealth can be a game changer. And for some people, there is going to be continued assistance needed along the way. And so my, my dream for monitoring would be that it looks like resourcing, but it's also a chance to ensure that the upkeep is taking place and to kind of alongside people when they're struggling.
I was, I had a similar question. I was thinking about how to leverage those nonprofit developers because they do have programs like that already in place. Um, and I just wonder like for those who are for-profit, if there's any way that, you know, to ensure that whomever they're selling to or renting to, that they also have some of those supportive services. I'm just looking at things from equity perspective. Giving people access to things that they may need to, to. Giving people access to things that they may need to, so that they're successful.
And I think really the down payment assistance is the thing that gives us that edge to begin resourcing on the backend. I am trying to understand who does what within this space and really create a continuum and a network of partners. Home Repair Program is a key example that we look at, how do we work alongside Habitat for Humanity, Midnight Housing, Sedgwick County, and understanding who else is in that space with those projects. So I don't know, like, in terms of a for-profit rental, that may be a little more challenging. But anybody who is engaging on the homeownership side, then it becomes part of our continuum.
On the voucher side, they'd be interacting with their housing case manager with the housing authority every year, at least every year, every time there's any change in their financial situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This has been really good conversation. I appreciate the board, you know, asking great questions and helping us to make sure that we're keeping track of the parameters and the guidelines that we should within this. And so I think this is a perfect point to bring this to the board and to share because we're in the home stretch and hoping to launch it very soon. But make sure that we can bake these things in, in the final steps of the process. So go back to where we were here. Our next item was other business and open discussion. Are there any business items or discussion items the board would like to bring? Anybody online? One thing I wanted to bring to the board is, if you haven't seen the advertisements and things cropping up on social media yet, the Greater Wichita Housing Conference is back again for twenty twenty four. The dates will be April seventeenth and eighteenth. It will be at Century Two. And I think a lot of people who attended last year, remember we had registration. This year, that is not the case. This is a free conference. We will be posting the agenda online. And so if there are particular sessions you're interested in, then you can come and go. If you want to soak up the whole thing both days, you can also come for both days. And so we don't have a registration form this year just because it started getting into complexities when we do that. But we are hoping that we'll see many people who are interested in many aspects of housing be able to attend. I see a question from John. I don't know if they officially have yet. I think our agenda is about to go up on the website. So this would be about the right time to reach out to them. I'm glad to try to make a couple of those contacts. And I believe I have not been, well, actually, this is a good time to let Lance share a little bit about some of the conference planning and the different types of presentations or sessions that may be on.
Yes, it is the two days. The first day is geared more towards landlords, developers, property owners, things of that nature. And the second day is really geared towards tenants, prospective homeowners, and, and people in that arena. But both days offer a great diversity of topics and breakout sessions and, and things of that nature. And so you'll be able to see that once we, once we push out the agenda. Staff's been working hard to make sure there's a little bit of everything for anyone who would be interested in going.
That was the main other item I had today, but I really appreciate the board touching base here. We hadn't met for the last couple of months just because we didn't have any immediate business items. But it's always good to get to reconvene and just hear from you all and make sure that we're still on the same, on the right path.
We appreciate that.
So with that in mind, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, say a. I'll oppose, same sound.
Aye.
Brad, we'll credit you with the in favor. So motion carries for a meeting is adjourned at three fifty nine P M. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.